Call the Metropolis City Council, Monday the 24th of February 2014. Call it all please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Daughery.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizelle.
Here.
Thank you.
If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. You may stand in for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear God, we come tonight thanking you for all the many blessings that you've given each and every one. Be with this council, dear heavenly Father, that each and every decision that we make will be for the better of the community. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home with their families. Be with ones in our community, dear heavenly Father, that have lost loved ones. Be with the ones that are sick, dear heavenly Father, and guide and direct the lives of the caregivers. Be with our community, dear heavenly Father, that harmony is there, dear heavenly Father, support each and every decisions. We ask in thy precious name, amen. Amen. Need a motion to approve the meetings of February the 10th, 2014.
Second.
Motion made in second. Call them all please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizelle.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item, citizens' request. Southernmost, Ms. Cindy.
Good evening.
What do you mean?
To give you our annual update. And in doing so, I'm gonna pass around a packet of information and I'll just go through the information and if you have any questions, just feel free to ask. Oh yes. Let's see what I have here. Let's see how many I have. You're mayor.
That's all right, we can share this one.
Okay.
I share well.
I got 10. Yeah, okay. I got this one now. All right. Yes, and I can give up this packet when I'm done here after I approve it for you, mayor. Okay. First of all, if you will look at the, on the right-hand side, this lists our annual summary for calendar year 2013. And you, one thing that maybe from the last time I was here, we now represent eight counties. Jackson County was added. So, our website reflects the region of eight counties. Our new visitors' guide, which is in the very back of the right-hand side, lists, of course, the whole region is in it, all of your lodging, dining, attractions, and so forth. The second handout on the right side is the economic impact of travel. And I just printed that out so you can see the breakdown for Massac County. And that also then shows the increase over 2011. And this is compiled by the U.S. Travel Association out of Washington, DC. Just gives you an idea of the impact. And then on the left-hand side is one page of our website, just so you have an idea of how our new website promotes the area. And the next page is our tourism, or our exhibit booth that we take to all of our shows. And the same way with the, with the one behind it, you'll see, for example, you'll see that Metropolis brochure is in as part of our exhibit. And this past year, we've been at a lot of shows in the last couple of months, not only with our own convention and visitor bureau, but then we have been partnering with our other convention and visitor bureaus in southern Illinois, as well as our regional office of tourism. And so as a result, we've been to Indianapolis, in fact, that was a 10-day show, several different shows in St. Louis and Chicago. And, and so again, our visitors' guide is the main piece, as well as other individual brochures that we distribute. And as far as advertising, you'll go back to that left-hand side, I want to point out just a sample of a couple of ads. One is that you will see this one with Superman Celebration. What we did is we listed one event for each of the eight counties and then took three different photos of the region. And that's part of our advertising that, that we've been using. Another ad behind it is a bicycle, this is specifically for a bicycle trail guide, so we focused on cycling and then just made a listing of all the different types of activities in the area. You can see that. And then behind that ad is another ad that we placed, which went in major newspapers throughout the Midwest. And on the bottom left-hand corner, you can see Adventures Are Endless in Southernmost Illinois. And it lists all kinds of things in the area, including Metropolis, Home of Superman, and Harrah's. That's another ad. And I mentioned that, that we've been doing marketing with our regional tourism office. And that's now called Trails to Adventure. It's located, the office headquarters is in Ducoyne. And myself and the other four directors of the Convention and Visitor Bureau sit on that board. And so that is 100% funded through the State Office of Tourism, and we have great opportunities to promote the area regionally. I mentioned some of the shows. We just produced a wine guide, an antique guide is in the works, a bicycle, trail guide, all from this region, which encompasses about 21 counties. And then this is just one idea of an ad, and it's in black and white right now, but it just, it's gonna be placed in numerous outdoor magazines promoting our different lakes and waterways. So that's an example on why it says Trails to Adventure. And behind that is, it'll say Trekkeroo. And this is what we worked on with Trekkeroo to get top 10 things for families to do in Illinois. And the number seven, I only put the papers that were specific, but number seven was visit the hometown of Superman. And then finally, an idea of some of our other promotion is the Illinois Travel Blog. And we were able to get them to feature the Americana Hollywood Museum in that, so a copy of that is in there as well. And then the brochure in the back is the Illinois Travel Guide. Of course, all Metropolis and Massac County hotels were responsible for making sure that the lodging and everything that is included on, in each of our eight counties with the Illinois Office of Tourism, they produced this and this is the main distribution piece for the state of Illinois' marketing. And let's see, so, so I've mentioned in the past, we deal a lot with travel writers. And in this annual summary, you'll see a lot of the publicity that we've received on the region from travel writers, mentioned throughout there. And it's, it's, a lot of it is social media, websites, television, radio, and print. And some of them, you can go online and view those. And additionally, we've been, currently, we're working with three different groups for Metropolis. And we work with Harrah's. One group that we have is coming in June for three nights. It's the Illinois Geographical Society, they're holding their annual meeting, but for about 120 people. So we connected them with Christie from Harrah's and we're helping them with some of their planning for day trips, different activities of while we're here meeting. Another group we have for July 11th is Vandelia Bus Line, so a motor coach tour group. They, and they're visiting Fort Massac, the Super Museum, and they're gonna tour the planet. So, they're doing, yeah, that in July. And then lastly, another group that we have is the Illinois Fraternal Order of the Police. And that's about 175 people. And they contacted us last, oh, it's been about a year and a half ago, I think, anyway. And so Carol in the office is still the, the sales manager, and she worked with them and worked with Harrah's, and they went ahead and booked that. And
We're actually putting on extra police force for that group there for security.
I was gonna say. Yeah, well, and they booked the Baymont Theater for an evening, and they wanted a DJ, so we worked with, recommended Chad and referred them to local caterers here. They're doing a day at the Gambit Golfing, so we've helped them, also they're having an outing at the Cash River Winery. So, yeah, I think that all is well. In fact, I was just over at the Baymont talking with them and delivering the visitor guides to them. And he told me, he said, "Well, they have booked us completely and, and they're working closely with them as well." So. Let's see, that is pretty much an overview of what, what we've been doing and I don't know if I skipped over, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If there's anything that the city, anything further the city would like us to be doing, please let us know. And, and we would certainly welcome any financial support. Any questions, anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And I think Ms. Lisa has something she'd like to speak to the council about.
Thank you, Mayor Billy. If you'll remember, last year, I was here on behalf of the Metropolis Chamber of Commerce, and we passed out the Think Local First buttons and posters. And we worked with Susan Odom from the University of Illinois on that project. She contacted us at the chamber, and she has compiled the financial information through the end of the year. And she said that she was amazed. She said there was a significant increase. And we talked about the time-wise from when we started the Think Local First. And from April until the end of the year, there was an increase of $87,000 in sales tax revenue. She said that's substantial. And she is contributing that to the Think Local First campaign that the chamber did. Now, I know that you're thinking that the bridge repairs didn't hurt us in Metropolis, and that is probably correct. However, the largest increases occurred in August and September before the bridge work began. So I want to thank all of the businesses that participated, and I especially want to thank the citizens of Metropolis and the aldermen and Mayor Billy for everything that you did to support our local businesses. And on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, way to go.
Appreciate it. And it was a very good effort, I have to say, by the, all merchants and stuff in the city, I, they, they really worked hard at it, they did a good job. And I do think it makes a difference if you just think about it, you know? And we all know sometimes you just can't help, but every little bit that we do does help.
That's correct.
All right. Anyone else that has anything that they would like to say under the citizens' request? Under the mayor's report? I have nothing. But I will say, it's not good not to have anything to say. We are canceling, I will put a notice out tomorrow, we are canceling the Park and Recreation Meeting that was scheduled for this Wednesday. We will reschedule that for March the 5th, which is a week from this Wednesday, and go from there.
I think I'll need an industrial.
At that same day? All right. That's a park. And rec. And industrial. If you can just get with me later on, tell you know what we're throwing on there or whatever. Or get, or just be mailed in to go. And we will cancel that meeting, have her do that first thing in the morning. I think that's everything. Next thing on the agenda, corporate council report, utility evaluation. Mr. Abel.
I'll be brief. There were about three things I put in the packets this week. I just want to keep you kind of updated what's going on in, in energy world, electric world, and also when we see things happening in our other municipalities that we participate with and some things. As you know, one of the articles was about what's happening to Ameren's customers. A number of those customers elected, and we, we actually gave you an example of one last month in the Ameren IP district, where they elected this variable rate. Well, guess what? It's been cold this winter, and gas prices have come way back, and the spot market for electric has gone through the ropes, whereas we might be paying, for producing electric, say, at the power plant, $50 or $55 a megawatt hour, we're seeing prices 100, 300, whatever on the spot markets up near Chicago and in the suburbs. Some day, one day it got up to 1,800 a megawatt hour for about an hour. That's because gas prices are, are really coming back. And in the wintertime, the cold winter, the, the gas supplies are dedicated first to heating purposes, and the power suppliers get them, second, they're very few. I think it's only around, of all the natural gas, electric generators, only a very small percentage, 12% of them have a guaranteed supply. They have curtailment, just like you've heard of curtailment down in Murray State and a few places like that. Well, they have curtailment contracts with these energy suppliers, and most of the natural gas suppliers do. And so law of supply and demand, but we've seen a, we've seen a solid trend in gas prices coming back up. So when you've heard the last couple of years about all these, these, what we call these alternate retail marketers for electric, and they're coming in, they're offering these prices, and we've seen them here in our community, people got mailers and stuff, offering you electric for five cents and three cents and stuff. Well, in order to compete, some of the bigger power companies, the Ameren IPs and the Comeds went out and offered variable rates, because for limited periods of time, they had gas and they could, you know, they could shift gas into things and make the rates cheaper. But you also had to take, you had to take the, the bad with the good. And so now some are taking the bad, and frankly, what we finding is, those people that did it, the savings they had last summer's been wiped out in about one month's time. So, as we always like to say here, and by the way, in this first article, it talks about, these are energy rates only. So when they're talking about seven and a half cents, energy only, or 11 cents, or 13 cents, or 10 cents, have been running around 10, 10, 10 and a half cents, that's energy only. Our retail customers, and we just, we looked at last year's retail customers, residential customers, paid an average of 8.6 cents. Now that's energy, that's transmission, that's getting it all the way to our city and us getting it out to them. So our retail customers, your constituents paid an average of about 8.6 cents, killed on our last year. Now, will prices always, will they go up?
Sure.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna learn this week, we're looking at the budget this week at IMEA, and we'll get projections. Right now, we're thinking probably about 4%. The, but January, because of some of the, because we were able to settle some of our issues with Ameren last year, Jammer, for January's bill that we got in February was down. Last year, IMEA was running us about, I'll say $74 a megawatt hour, 7.4 cents kilowatt hour, if you want to call it that. January, we were at 6.9, and we'll be close to that for the next two or three months, more likely. We're gonna have the savings that spread out over the agency because of that settlement, that litigation. If the FERC ever gets around to doing this job on the hotel sale distribution side, we're gonna have another savings. So, as we like to say, we won't always be the cheapest, but we certainly won't be the highest, and you won't have the spikes. And that's what most of these articles that I gave you are about, is you're seeing spikes. We get cheap, and then we get high. We get cheap, and then we get high. And that's really hard on people living on a fixed income to meet that. I mean, you think about it. You can't budget that. And so we try so that we don't fluctuate that much. We might fluctuate 2%, or we might fluctuate 4%, but we don't fluctuate a whole lot. We don't take these big jumps. When you talk about going from two and a half cents to 34 cents, I mean, you're talking hundreds of thousands of percent jumps, real quick.
Rick, they've got a question for you. They just talking about some of these new laws in Congress and this and that, talking about raising the bills maybe 80%. How would that affect us? Will we be one of those 80 percenters?
It, it all depends on how they go about doing it. You know, for the last umpteen years, we've talked, they've talked about, and I'm sure the mayor and I are going to Washington in about two weeks, and I know we'll hear more about it then. But if, if it comes down by way of, say, a carbon emission type tax, or a, or if it requires additional equipment, if you will, it could affect all of us. However, Prairie State Energy that we've invested in is the most state-of-the-art plant in the country. Now, that's not to say it doesn't have its bugs. If you go out on the internet, you're gonna find out it's had its issues, but we're getting, we're working through those. In the last month and a half, we've been operating at about 80%, or a little better than 80% of capacity, which is much, much better. The, the one, Triple County, one and two, emission-wise, they're in pretty good shape. Triple Two particularly, because it's a recent built plant, coal-fired plant. Unfortunately, politics being what it has been the last several years, everybody has targeted coal-fired plants. I mean, and what they don't seem to realize is that we, they've targeted coal-fired, and coal-fired's come offline as a result. And coal-fired's still scheduled to come offline. In other words, there are a lot more plants that are probably gonna close. But we've not built gas plants to take their place, and we've not built other resources to take their place, certainly not more economic resources, because gas is a lot, I mean, other than when gas prices have been unnaturally low, gas is a lot more costly to run as a rule than in electric energy type plant. And so if they, if they continue to target coal, we're gonna come up with a shortage. By 2017 or 18, the Midwest is gonna be, I've read, I read two studies, one says we'll be 4,000 megawatts short in capacity, and another says we'll be 7,000 megawatts short. Adding laws like that's only gonna make it worse, because you're gonna, because it's gonna, they're gonna target the old plants and they're gonna shut down. And so
I doubt they're gonna lose some of the units across the river.
I don't doubt it. I suspect we will.
2015, I believe.
I suspect we will, because that's about, and, and so where are you gonna get it from? Who, where are you gonna get it from? Because it's not there.
They were projected to build two gas power plants in Kentucky. I think by 215, 216, something like that.
Okay.
I heard that, that was last week.
Really?
Yeah.
About to get started.
They, they better hurry. In the sad part is, like I said, only 12% of these plants that exist now have a guaranteed gas supply, okay? What's called uninterruptible supply. Well, if you're gonna get one permitted, you better have an uninterruptible supply, because if you don't, then the reliability councils are gonna get after you, because you don't have it.
You don't sign in.
You can't, you don't want a gas company, because it's, "Sorry, can't give it to you today, gotta, gotta put it over here."
We'll help you all for a couple days while we catch up.
So then you gotta buy it somewhere to, because if you still got a guaranteed contract that you gotta supply, and that's what starts driving it up again. I don't know, it's, energy is a scary thing, looking out down the road. It's a real scary thing.
Mr. Abel, about three weeks ago, you passed out a pamphlet for your information, FYI. And reading that, it, it's very worse, and I'm gonna see if you agree. The gas, or the electric is going to go up regardless. They're gonna be paying more for electric. If a coal plant shut down, are converted to gas, that's gonna require pipelines as well as gas-fired units. And who's gonna pay for that?
Exactly.
It's gonna be passed on to our constituents, the individuals, they're gonna pay for those pipelines, they're gonna pay for those coal-fired units. Right now, I think EEI's got five, and they don't run them. They run two of them at 50% because it costs too much to run them. Trump line had two turbines, and it costs so much to run those turbines, they've taken them out. They don't run them.
That's why there's gonna be a real short supply in about three years, because all these things that we've had available, they're taken out, or they're not. There's one down at Joppa, one of them at EEI, not only does it not run, it won't run, because it, it, why do the maintenance on it when it's too costly to run? And so it's not, it's not even been test-fired in two years. We know that for a fact. But it was in the Ameren portfolio. But, so chances are, no, they won't bring that one back. You're right, it's gonna be, it's gonna cause everybody's price to increase. And of course, I guess you might say, "Well, if prices on coal and natural gas go up, then they get closer to solar and wind and other things." Because right now, those cost a fortune if you're gonna run one. If you got, if you happen to have one, it costs you seven arms and legs to run one.
They won't last long, will they? They kill too many birds.
But the, but the, you know, the trend we've seen is towards renewable energy resources, but they're costly. So the only way to make it efficient, effective, is to try, the government to try to raise the cost on traditional energy resources, coal, gas, and other things. And it's, it's having its effect. And yes, it will ultimately get passed down right to the American consumer, everywhere you live.
Well, Rick, speaking of costs, I read where Ameren received final approval to construct a 300-mile new line for a billion dollars from central Illinois into Indiana.
Yes, that's true.
So I hope we don't get stuck with some of that.
Well, I hope we don't either. Although, there, there is a need, actually, in a few areas, I don't know, that particular one, we've talked about it, the IMEA, there is a need, believe it or not, for getting some power out of this region into northern Illinois. And we have, we don't have enough lines. There has been discussion about building some line, another line that would allow Prairie State to take power north further because of what's called congestion. Right now, if there are too few of lines, you pay a charge called congestion charges. So, but yeah, they, they will pass that, that will, that line's been approved, so it's planned that it'll pass on to Ameren's customers. Now, we, I think we looked at that, I'm pretty, I know we looked at that, I mean, it appeared to us that we would, it would have limited impact on us, because our, our transmission and wholesale distribution rates are pretty well been set for the, for now. But we don't believe that'll have much of an impact on the agency. But it's, it's just something you guys gotta consider.
Yep. The carbon taxes will get you eventually.
If it, if it gets here, it's gonna get, if it gets here, it will get us. The only other thing I threw in was Naperville. Naperville's always been one of the biggest, wealthiest cities in the, in the
Agency.
Well, not just the agency, I mean, they're the 800 pound real, in Illinois. And they face the same kind of issues that we all face. I noticed they've got wastewater issues, they got water issues, and they got electric issues. The one thing they didn't do, and this, this really shocks me, Naperville does not have a PPA, okay? Has not had a PPA, and has not had a rate increase. And now, I'm, I'm telling you some stuff that, that they actually have gone out and said, that Naperville kinda got the gold star a couple of years ago, because they got a federal grant to, to participate in this smart grid project, okay? Well, the grant was 13 million, they had, it was 11 million, I'm sorry, and they had come up with 13 million. At that time, their electric fund had a surplus. Well, now their electric fund has a deficit, but it's not the problem with the smart grid project, okay? So, that's all they say. But nonetheless, I guess my point is, no matter how well-to-do we may think we are, no matter how
It doesn't take long.
It doesn't take long. And if we don't keep up with these rising costs, we find ourselves in a hole. Naperville's in about a 14-million-dollar hole electric-wise right now, because they've not done power cost adjustment. They're gonna, they're going to. And they can do, they can rebuild it over about three years at about 2, 2 and 1/2% a year. But they're, they're in a hole.
Utilities or something.
So no matter, I say, no matter how well-to-do we are, we have to be careful and always be vigilant, we don't let ourselves get in a hole.
Stay in the game.
And, you know, speaking of utilities, and I probably should've brought it down under the mayor's report, but, you know, the 3.2 million dollars that, you know, we got a little criticism when we actually did those know, we got a little criticism when we actually did those updates and everything like that. But if you look back at the, at the last two months, it's the city of Metropolis has experienced, weather-wise, as far as I know, we did not have one major outage.
And people appreciate that, really.
Through that really bad weather, the, the night that all the ice hit and everything like that, and it was, it was pretty bad that morning. We had one call-out of a limb that fell and tripped a breaker. But the week prior to that and the morning that that ice hit, our electric superintendent and the men were out going up and down the streets and if they seen a lo, 'cause it was the heaviest they'd been all year. If they saw a limb that was hanging close to power lines, they cut them, street department hauling them off.
Smart move.
And fortunately, a lot of the times when we have to go to the seminars and we go to the meetings and Rick goes to the IMEA meetings and stuff like that, sometimes it's a little aggravating because sometimes you really don't have time to go. But we just experienced something that happened this year with the new, I guess she's the president or the CEO of APPA. She's actually a, a very fine young lady that actually knows where the city of Metropolis and the IMEA actually are. I mean, she's been a part of that and, and the meetings and stuff and she's, you know, she's a, she's a big part of the APPA and she's actually in charge now. And I think that helps rural America. You know, when you've got the DC people and stuff like that that actually can put a face to a, to a city or where you're from, what area you're from and what you participate in. So that current, that can't hurt anything.
There are the big, one of the biggest things as far as Metropolis is when we took the 10th Street Substation off.
Absolutely.
I mean, that was a big step.
And we actually, can, if we have a problem now in a given block, we can isolate that and instead of having ten blocks out, you may have three houses out.
Yeah.
Which does help and it gets you back online that much faster. So, you know, the street department, water department and all of them do a good job and they're, they're trying to work ahead. So, you know, they have done a good job this, this winter and stuff like that. You have anything else on utility things? Next thing, on the committee reports, ordinance, Mr.-
I was getting covered.
That's how come I hurried that long, I didn't want you to go to sleep, pull out that chair.
You said, "Shut that thing back."
Go ahead, finish your round.
No, I had to call him today, he was actually working, 'cause I could hear all the laughing and cutting up going on in the background.
I have no idea what he's talking about. This come out of our last ordinance committee meeting, the first reading on an ordinance amending Title I, General Provisions, Chapter Ten, General Provisions, Section Ten-Ninety-Nine, generally, general penalty of the code in Metropolis, our first reading on that. That's all that came out of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Carroll, police and fire.
Yes, Mayor, we had a meeting on February the nineteenth and we discussed three issues in the Foreign Police Committee. One issue was repair on the air conditioning and heat pump at the Metropolis Fire Department. It was the committee's recommendation that Chief Morris go back and check the warranty on the unit and also obtain additional price from another vendor that had talked to him about repair. The second issue, discuss and make recommendations on the promotion of the cabinet. I'm gonna hold that until after the closed session. The third issue was discussed and make recommendations on the fire chief being commissioned as a peace officer. That issue was discussed and there being no motion, it was moot, it just tabled, or not tabled, but it was just a dead subject. It died on the vine. So that, that was the end of that. So we will go at, into our closed session when Mr. Abel has time and discuss this one item and report on it after the closed session.
Is that all?
That's all I have.
Okay. Next item, department heads. Chief Massey?
I have nothing.
Chief Morris?
Nothing at this time.
Christie?
I think it's time. Wait a minute, I just-
Okay.
Oh, I just wanna report that last Saturday night, we had our Metropolis Wine Fest at Harrah's. We had approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-something attendance. We don't know where all of them came from, but you know, there wasn't, there was some local wine sign. There was some local there, but most of them, I did not know. But I do know that there were people from St. Louis that came and also people from Nashville that came specifically for the wine fest. The beginning of February, we had, it was a very cold day in February, we had our first disc golf tournament. We had twenty-two attendants and most of those had not been here before, so, you know, we brought in a lot of new people. And our next one will be March three.
And I will say, on the disc golf, there's very few days, even during that, the snow was this deep, there was people out there playing disc golf. I seen a guy out there yesterday, that wind was blowing a hundred mile an hour and there was two young people out there and one of them had a coat on, the hood, and the other one had a short-sleeved shirt on, so.
I was playing about there playing when it was sixteen above.
Yeah, so we already know it's being used.
And, and it's being used by people that's a couple hours from you.
Oh, yeah.
Not just the locals.
Yeah, that's actually driving down. I know some people that, a couple of young men that I stopped out there one day just to see where they is from, they were from Carbondale. I guess, I think they was college students and they came down two or three times a week, they said, when the weather was a little nicer and they, I know they've been here this winter, 'cause I saw them twice. Old business. New business. Miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salaries, payroll and contract bills.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Daughtry. Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
Second.
Call or roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
We have two items, pending litigation and personnel.
I make motion to go on closed session for those items in a second.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown? Carroll?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.